I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everyone stand for the signature of the last name?
Yay!
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 6th, May 2nd, September 28th, December 5th, 2016, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Local Source, and the clerk of the municipality. By state law, there is no person being permitted in this building at any time. Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Mrs. Beviano?
Present.
Mrs. Burge?
Here.
Mrs. Hudak?
Here.
Mr. Colobus?
Here.
Mr. Martusi?
Here.
Mrs. Bellani?
Here.
Mr. Walrath?
Here.
I would like to read the following election results from the election that was held on November 8th, 2016. For three members to the Linden Board of Education for a three-year term. Dawn Beviano, 2,822 votes. Susan L. Hudak, 3,074 votes. Gregory R. Martusi, 3,010 votes. And one member for a one-year unexpired term. Anthony Walrath, 3,947 votes. I declare the following persons as duly elected members of the Linden Board of Education as a result of the election held on Tuesday, November 8th, 2016. For three years, Dawn Beviano, 2,822 votes. Susan L. Hudak, 3,074 votes. Gregory R. Martusi, 3,010 votes. And one member for a one-year unexpired term. Anthony Walrath, 3,947 votes. I declare the following persons as duly elected members of the Linden Board of Education as a result of the election held on Tuesday, November 8th, 2016. For a three-year term, Dawn Beviano, Susan L. Hudak, Gregory R. Martusi. For a one-year unexpired term, Anthony Walrath. We will now administer the oaths of office to the newly elected board members. First up is Mrs. Beviano.
Ready?
Ready.
All right. I state your name.
Dawn Beviano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States and this state.
In the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I?
I.
Say your name.
Dawn Beviano.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For a member of the Office of Board of Education.
And not disqualified.
And not disqualified.
As voter, as a voter pursuant.
As a voter pursuant.
To RS.
To RS.
19.
19.
Colon, 4-1.
Colon, 4-1.
And not disqualified due to the conviction of a crime.
And not disqualified due to the conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed in.
Or offense listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA.
18A.
18A.
2-1, the 12, I'm sorry, 12-1.
12-1.
Very technical. And that I faithfully.
And that I faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Mom slide your hand in there? Ready?
Yeah.
I?
I.
Say your name.
Susan Hudak.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
And of the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
She signs it at the end. I?
I. Susan Hudak.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member.
For office of member.
Of the Board of Education.
Of the Board of Education.
I am not disqualified.
I am not disqualified.
As a voter.
As a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS.
RS.
19.
19.
Colon.
Colon.
4-1.
4-1.
And not disqualified.
I'm not disqualified.
Due to the conviction of a crime.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in.
Listed in.
NJ.
NJ.
SA.
SA.
18A.
18A.
Colon.
Colon.
12-1.
12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform.
Perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Where's Almo? Where's Almo? Smile.
Thank you.
Mr. Martusi? I want to show you.
I state your name.
I, Greg Martusi.
Here. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Greg Martusi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter.
And not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Pursuant, pursuant, do that again. Pursuant to.
Pursuant to RS 19.
RS 19.
Colon 4-1.
Colon 4-1.
And not disqualified.
And not disqualified.
Due to conviction of a crime or offense.
Due to conviction of crime or offense.
Listed in NJSA.
Listed in NJSA.
18A:12-1.
18A:12-1.
12-1. 12-1. And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of that office.
All the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, ma'am.
Can you turn around? Look at the camera.
Okay, repeat after me. I, Anthony Walrath.
I, Anthony Walrath.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Anthony Walrath.
I, Anthony Walrath.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
For the office of member of Board of Education.
And not disqualified as a voter.
And not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to.
Pursuant to.
RS 19:4-1.
RS 19:4-1.
And not disqualified.
And not disqualified.
Due to, due to conviction of a crime.
Due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense.
Or offense.
Listed in.
Listed in.
NJSA.
NJSA.
18A.
18A.
Colon 12-1.
Colon 12-1.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of that office.
Of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Walrath.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2017 Linden Board of Education, Tracy Ann Burge, John S. Colobus, Anthony Walrath, Alexander Alvarez, Raymond Tate, Kapalewski, Teresa Bellani, Dawn Beviano, Susan Hudak, Gregory R. Martusi. I make that motion. Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Martusi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani? Mr. Walrath? At this time, I would like to entertain nominations for the position for the office of President of the Linden Board of Education.
I nominate John Colobus.
Mr. Colobus, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
And announce the votes and votes for Mr. John Colobus as President. Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Martusi?
Yes.
Mr. Kapalewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
I now declare the new President of the Board of Education to Mr. John Colobus, and I turn the gavel over to you, Mr. Murray.
Okay, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion for the Office of Vice President of the Linden Board of Education.
Tracy Ann Burge.
Second. Okay. Tracy, do you accept?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Martusi?
Yes.
Mrs. Kapalewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yeah.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I would like to make a motion to reappoint Kathleen A. Gaylord as our Business Administrator, Board Secretary, effective July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, per negotiated agreement. Could I have? Are they all together? Okay. All right. Also, we can vote it with one call. All right, I would like to make the motion to reappoint Ms. Cleary as Assistant Superintendent, effective July 1st, 2017, through June 30th, 2018, per negotiated agreement.
We're doing three and four. All right, I'm going three and four.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Martusi?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Okay. All right, our next motion would be to adopt Robin's, Robert's Rules of Order as the official parliamentary procedure manual to be used to conduct meetings and appoint the Board Secretary and Board Attorney to act as the parliamentarians for the 2017-2018 school year. And also, for a motion to adopt the rules and regulations of the Board of Education of the City of Linden, bylaws, policies, and regulations as stated in the Linden School District Policy Manual and job descriptions for the 2017-2018 school year. And finally, to authorize the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, and Union County Local Source to be adopted as the official newspapers to be used for the advertising of meetings and legal ads and all other necessary public notifications for the 2017-2018 school year. I ask for a.
I move items five, six, and seven.
Second.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Martusi?
Yes.
Mr. Kapalewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
All right, at this time, I'd like to motion to approve the Order of Business for 2017-2018. Everything has to be there? No? All right, the standing committees. Okay. Curriculum instruction includes all items pertaining to education, athletics, and audiovisual support. Management operations includes personnel, negotiation, security, public relations, and contracted professional services. Support operations, finance, includes general finance, auditing of bills, official bonds, leases, and contracts, insurance, and the annual budget of expenses of the schools. Facilities includes issues related to the construction of a new building, of new buildings, acquisition of sites, and planning for future needs. It will also include all matters pertaining to the operation of buildings and grounds. We also have planning and policy, student judiciary, and the committees, which will be delegated later on this evening. Okay, so at this point, I would ask for somebody to.
I move, I make Order of Business.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Martusi?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Okay, under the Open Public Meetings Act, motion to approve the calendar of board meetings as follows.
Mr. President, if I may. I would respectfully request, just for the month of January, I have a conflict with January 25th. If for the month of January, I can redo the 23rd and 24th instead of the 24th and 23rd.
Okay, Dr. Robert Telsi is asked to change our January committee meetings, committee of the whole and board meeting, from the 24th to the January 23rd and 24th. Do I have somebody to make that motion?
I make a motion to change the January 24th meeting to the 23rd, and the regular scheduled meeting for January 25th to go to January 24th.
Okay. Roll.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Martusi?
Yes.
Mr. Kapalewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next is a rather lengthy one, so we'll just go around Robin and everybody read part of it. It's the Ethics Pursuant to School Ethics Code, New Jersey, SA, 18A, 12-21, Code of Ethics for School Board Members. Each member swears to and avows the following. Okay, Mrs. Burge?
A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desireed changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
C, I will combine my board actions, policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
D, I will carry out my responsibilities, not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, to see that they are well-run. I will recognize the authority vested with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises for taking any private action that may compromise the board. Mrs. Hudak?
Oh, I'm sorry. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for the personal gain or for the gain of friends.
I will uphold, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school.
Eight, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer.
Okay, and for I and J, I'll do the list, too. I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. And J, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
I move item 10.
You should know that, okay.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Colobus?
Yes.
Mr. Martusi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
In front of you, there is an editor's signature page that you have to sign off on. Do you have anything to do with that?
Can we sign it?
No, he's not signing.
Okay. All right, and we're. All right, sign this. Okay, we want to sign it first, and then we'll go to the rest.
I thought she probably had to.
One point.
He was getting it right on the chip.
Alright, and the final item on the agenda is lengthy, but essentially what it does is it allows the Board of Education to, members to be reimbursed for any places they go to, any meetings outside of the district, or any, you know, wherever we have to go in order to further the benefit of the school. Alright, so I would ask for a...
I make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Roll.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBiano?
Yes.
Mrs. Hurd?
Yes. Yellow baby jump.
Mr. Kalibus?
I guess it's the same thing.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Tappaleski?
Yes, I abstain, I'm Mr. Tappaleski.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
So, I move to your turn.
They got me in that, okay. Okay, at this time, I would ask for a movement for German, for the...
Ray, or Ray.
I know.
All favor, please. Second.
Okay, at this time, I would like to open up the meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order. Please, drive the chief flag.
Let the word be said, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter 231, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows: On January 6th, May 2nd, September 8th, and December 5th, notice sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, Local Source, and the district and municipality. By state law, there are no spoken permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items on this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as allowed, but regularly schedule monthly board meeting under the sunshine law.
Roll call. Alright, roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
President.
Mrs. DeBiano?
Present.
Mrs. Hurd?
Here.
Mrs. Toodak?
Here.
Mr. Kalibus?
Here.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Here.
Mr. Tappaleski?
Here.
Mrs. Bellani?
Here.
Mr. Walrath?
Here.
Okay, at this time, I would like to ask for somebody to approve the minutes. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBiano?
Yes.
Mrs. Hurd?
Yes.
Mrs. Toodak?
Yes.
Mr. Kalibus?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Stay.
Mr. Tappaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor to any comments in the public on agenda items only, and I would ask that we limit our discussions to three minutes. So if anybody wishes to talk or have anything to say or ask, now is the opportunity. Seeing none, I'll go right into the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kalibus. My report will be very brief tonight. I would just like to congratulate our newly elected board member, Mr. Martuzzi, and our re-elected board members, Mrs. Toodak, Mrs. DeBiano, Mr. Walrath, and the entire board. I look forward to working with you in this new year for the betterment of education for all of our kids, and I wish everyone a happy and healthy new year, all of our parents, students, and families. That concludes my report.
Okay.
That was one of the first things I've ever seen. I felt a little worried.
Alright, at this time, I think we... At this time, I would like the order to come and tell us what we did.
This is Mr. Warren Korecki, Korecki from Sibley, Cooley.
Good evening. As Kathy said, I'm Warren Korecki of Sibley, Cooley. I was the engagement partner on this audit this year, and the last piece of the puzzle, you should have received the audit report, and if there's any comments or questions from the board on what we do, and this is the last, you know, time we do. You should have received two reports, one for CAPRA, which is the financial statements and the financial reporting of it, and one for the Audit of Management Report. I'd just like to make a few brief comments about the CAPRA. This is required by the State Department of Education. This report was filed with the, the state also filed with the county superintendent. It should be on the website, it's on the website, the education. There's a lot of information in here. You did have an unqualified opinion, which means that you apply the rules and regulations of the State Department of Education. But there's one, and there's a lot of information in here that's confusing, a lot of duplication of it, but as I always say when I come here, there's one schedule in the back, and it starts on page 79 to 93, C1. It's the very detailed presentation of your operations for the year, and it's the only place in the report where there's some kind of variance, is it shows what you realize in revenues by detail, by taxes, by miscellaneous, and the appropriations are very detailed in here. So we're doing a budget for the 2017-18 school year, this is some of the state actual starts. It also acts as a profit and loss, so on page 93, you'll see at the bottom of the page to the right, you start the year with $3,495 in surplus, I mean, excuse me, with $21,927 in surplus, you generated $3.4 million surplus and back, and you ended the year with $25,423 in surplus, which is really quite healthy. However, there's some components to that, I'll just briefly go over those. Now, the $25 million, you have an emergency reserve of $924, for any emergency that you have during the year, budget-wise, if you need appropriations, money set aside for that. You have a $16,118 capital reserve, this is for your capital projects in your long-range facility plan, anything you want to do in a capital nature, you have money set aside for that. You have excess surplus from the prior year, it's $2.3 million, that's being used, utilized in your 2016-17 budget. You have reserve for accommodations, $1,441, those are orders that were put out by Kathy at year-end, they just haven't been completed, and when they're going to be completed now in this fiscal year, you'll have money set aside to pay for those. You have designated for this year's budget, $111,000, and then your free and clear surplus of $25 million, $2,286, that's your 2% that the state lets you take to use for any other purpose and for tax, we'll leave it for the next school. Sure.
The $16 million, is that how you use it, any...
That's going to use... No, as long as, we'll use it for projects in your long-range facility plan, anything you have, I think your plan's got about $55 million for projects.
Right, but it doesn't have to be by any special time?
No, that's, that's, once you put it in there, it stays in there, it's for use for capital projects, but it can't be used for any other purpose. Okay, so your surplus is really quite healthy. I'd like to go over the Audit of Management Report. It's a noted report, this is only required by the State Department of Education, it's not required by any other entity. There's about, it's only about, you know, 16, 17 pages, however, I'd say about 75% of the audit really revolves around this report. There's about 17, 18 different elements that the State Department of Education wants us to look at. It deals with financial reporting, payroll, schools, student body activities, transportation, fixed assets, and there's a 200-page audit manual that backs this small report up that we have to come in and sample everything from the VA's office. I'd just like to report, after we went through everything, there are no formal recommendations in this report, everything that we found, everything that we tested, the VA's office has been complying with all the new regulations of the State Department of Education.
Warren, could you just emphasize that again, because I think that's critical?
There's no recommendations on those, everything that we tested in this 200-page...
Explain what that means to the board.
Well, no, because even though it's...
It means that we did well, right?
No, it is very well, I mean financially and also compliance-wise, because this deals a lot of your compliance regulations that the state puts out, there's a lot of information, even though, like I said, it's only 13 pages, but the audit manual that backs it up, there's an excess of 200 pages, and those are all the compliance requirements for the State Department of Education, and everything we did test, there was nothing that we felt that had to be, when we make a recommendation on, so it's a job done.
Great job.
And that's it, at this point, I'll take any questions on the audit or the CAPRA.
Are, are official bond, what is that?
Surety bond, in other words, surety bonds on...
A long...
On the employee, yes, if something goes wrong, there's your bond.
And I would just like to make a comment, I guess I say this, now this is my fourth year saying this, but to have a budget the size of the budget that we have, $118 million and a change, to have it run every year, and to have zero recommendations, guys, I have to tell you that that is a testament to our business administrator, the best there is, I say it every year, in this district. But any other district, I guarantee you, there's not just a couple recommendations, there's several recommendations on things that need to be corrected, so it really is, Kathy, thank you very much, you do a great job. And the fact that I, the fact that I don't have to worry about the money helps me.
And she still takes the time to answer any four questions.
That's right. Kathy, I have to say, honestly, having worked both sides with you, and I've worked with the district, you're the best. Alright, at this time, you want to...
Yeah, because the Attorney Report, we have to discuss it close.
Yeah.
And I have some things for management to do. Do you want to go first, or do you want...
Okay. Alright, at this time, we'll have our, at least one committee, I mean, whatever it's going to be, I don't know what we tabbed from this month, because it was abbreviated month, but, do you want, you have anything for CNI?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent, present the following 18 motions of the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item 1, approve filing will evaluators for related services. Item 2, approve the enrollment of a student under the State Educational Stability Act. Item 3, amend board's action on past CNI reports. Item 4, grant permission for use of facilities and school activities. Item 5, approve district field trips. Six, approve training for district staff. Seven, approve professional development activities. Items 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13, approve tunnel one tutoring sessions at schools 1, 2, 4, 6, 8, and 8. Item 14, approve ediscier courses for 12th grade students to meet graduation requirements. Item 15, grants approval to extend the media center hours at Linden High School. Item 16, grants approval to submit the NCLV 2015-2016 carryover amendment for funds in the 2016-2017 school year. Item 17, proclaim the month of January as School Board Recognition Month, to recognize the services of the local school board members. Item 18, approve the superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, as discussed at the November 22nd, 2016 regular meeting. Mr. President, I move Curriculum and Instruction, items 1 through 18, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBiano?
Yes.
Mrs. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kalibus?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Tappaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Alright, this time, someone make a motion to close our, for our executive session, because we need to go over some legal issues, so...
And personnel.
And personnel. Second, roll.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBiano?
Yes.
Mrs. Hurd?
Yes.
Mrs. Toodak?
Yes.
Mr. Kalibus?
Yes.
Mr. Tappaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yeah, well, actually, yeah, might be.
Guys, so we're going into closed session, I don't know, it might be 20 minutes, 15, 20 minutes.
Do you want to read that?
Yeah, let me get to where I am.
Guys, just so you know, the latest weather report that I get from my subscription says one and a half inches to four inches of snow can fall overnight tonight.
Here?
Between 11 and 8 a.m.
That's not one.
So we're going to have school?
No, there's nothing.
Seven.
Dustin.
One and a half.
No.
I said more down south Jersey, though.
So the superintendent...
Now it's going to stop in the north.
I should pretend to...
It's going to be snowing afterward.
It's going to be snowing afterward. It's not like worst-case scenario is a delay opening, but that would have to be. If there's four inches on the ground, then 6 a.m., we gotta...
According to my phone, at 6 a.m. it's supposed to be where the snow stops. This is a... Depends on hearing.
Now you make the call, Danny.
I'll be up all night, as will my, my camera, my...
Does Laura put me out of the way at 6 a.m.?
Yes, always, rain, snow, shun, the rest is saying.
Okay, Attorney Report.
Anybody?
I'm going to read it. Anybody can read the Attorney Report.
I'll read it, you can read it.
It's a very...
Attorney Report is two...
Four.
I'll read it for you.
Which one? The Attorney Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, presents the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Number one, motion to approve the confidential settlement between, I mean, settlement agreement between the board, AS, MS, and LS. A copy is to file in the board secretary's office. Oh, I respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBiano?
Yes.
Mrs. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kalibus?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Tappaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Walrath?
Yes.
Okay, just come on, management operations.
The Management Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, presents the following 21 motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Number one is the path of passing of Carol Kerobaugh.
Thank you, Mrs. Toodak. I was very saddened to hear about the passing of Carol Kerobaugh. Carol worked for the Linden Board of Education for 27 years, started her teaching career in 1984 as a basic skills teacher at School One. Even after she retired for the last several years, she was a board group volunteer at School One, she would come in every day, and she was also, there'd be a lot of PTA, then she was the PTA president for a number of years too. So Carol will be sorely missed by, by a lot of people here in Linden, and on behalf of the district, I'd like to offer her a condolences.
Thank you, Dr. Robert Tozzi. Number two is to accept the resignation of the following staff listed. Number three is to amend the past management operations as listed. Number four, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 18, 19, 20, and 21 are all appointments. Number five is to approve the transfer of staff. Number six is to approve the following leaves of, leaves of absences that are listed. Number six is to compensate staff listed for unused vacation and sick days upon retirement as per negotiated contract. Number 14 is to grant approval to create a Bible Club and an American Sign Language Club at Linden High School for the 2016-17 school year, with the advisor as listed on the volunteer basis. Number 15 is to authorize the collection of, or donation of sick days to employee number listed for the staff members for the 2016-17 school year. Number 16 is to approve the restoration of an increment to the employee number that is listed. Number 17 is to approve the motion to terminate the employment of employee number that is listed on 30 days' notice in accordance with...
in accordance with the terms of the individual contract of employment between employee and the Linden Board of Education effective December thirtieth, two thousand sixteen. Let's see. That's it. Mr. President, I move items one through twenty-one and respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Bible club. I'm just... I don't know what my question is.
I know what your question is.
Okay, do you want to take it?
Please take it. I can answer it.
It's legal.
It was my school.
The advisor can't participate, so they're not technically advisor. They're there solely for supervision. It has to be a student-generated club. People access everyone. If you have clubs that are non-academic in nature, you can have a Bible club or... Okay, so he's not directing it. He's not allowed to participate. He's not allowed to direct it. He's just there purely for a supervision purpose. Okay. And it has to be student-generated. Okay, so yes, it's legal.
There's a Supreme Court ruling.
There is.
Where's the East Coast Board of Education?
Colleges can be different from private schools.
They're public.
Public or private, but for public schools, it is allowed as long as...
Football coach, it's the football coach.
Okay. No, I know that's fine. As long as he's not, yeah, he's not participating. He's not allowed to participate. All right.
Just doing all the new tests.
Well, it's the old school.
Saint James five or the other one.
Saint Jamesburg?
Saint James.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Palavis?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Tappoleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bolani?
Yes.
Mr. Worra?
Yes.
Okay, board operations.
Congratulations, Mr. Lamash.
Is that me talking?
Yes, you're right.
Mr. Palavis, excuse me. Just in case you don't know, Mr. Lamash is in the audience tonight. He was on the agenda as a point of the acting supervisor for world languages. I just wanted everybody to see your face.
Finance, there's ten finance items. Item one is awarding business administrator for board secretary's certification as of November thirtieth, that no budgetary line items accounts or comprehensive payments which will exceed the amount line appropriate by the board of ad. Two is the review of board secretary's monthly financial report appropriate section upon consultation with appropriate district officials, certifies that to the best of our knowledge, no major counterfund has been over expended in violation of six A twenty-three dash two dot eleven A and sufficient funds are available to meet district's financial obligations. Three is secretary's report for the month of November two thousand sixteen. Four, authorize the board secretary to draw warrants due for the salaries and supplemental payroll for the month of December. Five, authorize board secretary draw warrants amount specifying paper of person's name as per listed, a list submitted in the files of bookkeeping in general copy which will become part of the original minutes. List, six is a list, attached list of transfers and adjustments for the month of November. Seven is a treasury report for the month of November two thousand sixteen. Eight is a student activity report for Linden High School for the month of November copies are in hands of board members. Nine is to accept the order report for the fifteen-sixteen school year as prepared by something, Clute and Company Westfield. No recommendations are made. And ten is to approve contract with Xerox, state contract A five eleven forty-five for a sixty-month lease for equipment in school two, McManus, Soul, Guidance, and Superintendent's Office. There are no facilities on this thing, so I move facilities, items one through ten, and a second.
I have a question, just real quick.
Let them second it.
Okay.
Second.
Yeah. Now.
Oh, real quick. The C sixty, they're the same system. How come they're a different place?
Number ten.
Isn't it based on the number of copies you're particular about?
Yeah, there are copies, and I think that the one is color.
Oh, I was just wondering. No, but one. But...
The copies are built in, the copies are built in.
As part of the cost, yeah, the number of copies. Because you wind up paying more if you exceed the number of copies. Good, Mr. Worra, very good.
Looking out for our kids.
Right.
Okay, we had our second. Okay, roll.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Palavis?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Tappoleski?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Bolani?
Yes.
Mr. Worra?
Yes.
Okay, under planning policy, Mr. Birch? Nothing under the student judiciary either.
Just so you know, I have eighteen pending policies for the end of the month.
I've been reading them.
Eighteen.
Okay, next, report person to state delegate, Ms. Tappoleski.
There was a delegate assembly in the meeting in December. I forget the exact date, but I will give a more extensive report at the end of the month.
Okay, county delegate, Suneck?
No.
Okay, Educational Service Commission, Mr. Lam.
I went to the meeting last night, which was a shortened organizational, reorganizational meeting. Very short. The only thing to note was their tuition rates have gone up across the board. For the most part, they stayed around two percent or under three percent. The only thing that exceeded that were the individual therapies. They changed from changing, charging it hourly to charging it per session, and that is resulting in about a twelve percent increase. And it was approved last night, and Miss Schaefer will be getting that this week.
Usually they get them right away. I was wondering how it was taking so long.
It was just approved last night.
Does that impact us a lot?
Well...
Could. That's a potential, right?
But they have an increase. They were tuitioning like forever.
In a couple of years. The tuition itself is, for the most part, is two to three, around two percent. It was only the occupational therapy and the physical therapy that went up. What was happening was they were charging it by the hour, but the sessions were half an hour. So they were actually losing too much money, so they're trying to make it a little bit more equitable and not charging every student. They're not building it into the tuition. So only the students were actually getting it. So it's a little bit more equitable, so it may not necessarily even affect us. And that ends my report.
Thank you so much. Very comprehensive. Excellent.
Thank you, sir.
See, Mr. Martuzzi, put that there.
I'm making a trick, you're ready.
All right, now we, I don't think we have any ad hoc committees. Attorney committee, no. Negotiations, no. EST for parents, Mr. Beviana?
Mrs. Birch?
Okay. Hold on, let me just switch over to the student one. Okay, we had our meeting Thursday, December first, and it's held here at the board office. We started at six-thirty. Mrs. Bolani, Mr. Palavis, and myself also attended. We had representatives, parents from school one, school two, school four, school five, school six, school eight, school two, McManus, and the high school. We had seventeen moms and three dads. And we had, there were some issues that we talked about with the Pom Tomines food service, and I let the parents know that we will be having a meeting with them, with the students, at the EST meeting. And the students were going to be able to tell what challenges they were having with the lunches and things like that. They were concerned that school eight, when they ordered cheese steaks, some of the children didn't have cheese, and they were told they had to order their sandwiches with cheese, but that was looked into, and I believe Dr. Robotozzi, that was taken care of, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
We had, also, there was pre-orders for the high school, and they say that's going well. So the parents were kind of happy about that. One parent said that they were happy their son ran out of lunch money because then he couldn't buy snacks. So, because that was a concern, too. We had a parent that was concerned about a PTA issue over at school one that also has been taken care of. And the mold in the gymnasium, which I believe is over at school one, is not mold.
Not mold.
It is...
Aphrovestence.
Aphrovestence.
What?
Aphrovestence.
And then bubbles.
Salt.
On the water, and it bubbles up on the, on the center block. That like white powder in the...
I'm not just eye candy, I'm, I know some things. What am I, aphrovestence?
Salt in the, in the water, in the...
In the gymnasium, in the ceiling.
Water drips.
From the ceiling. They were complaining. They thought it was mold, but it's not.
Everything's mold.
On purpose.
That's right, and you know what? You could use aphrovestent as an adjective. You're an aphrovestent person. Very bubbly and alive. So it's a good connotation.
That describes me very well.
Oh, absolutely.
We had some parents that were very excited about their webpage that we had and that the calendars were being updated, and then there was splash bases or something. Yes, there were some concerns about difficulty with the athletic department in fighting stadiums when the children go away to away games. And I think Dr. Robert Ozzy spoke with Mr. Bevanna, and they will be taking care of that issue also.
Could it be Star System or whatever?
Yes.
Yeah, the issue is they, like, they'll say an away game, and they'll say this, like, the varsity stadium, but it's not, it's a...
But those place on that website, you're filling the information so that we access them.
And sometimes, you know, the freshman games or the middle school games get moved at the last minute. So whatever field's available, and so sometimes that's what the issue is.
Or they'll say the school and the field is not actually at the school like us. So, okay. They were also concerned about some soccer information for the, for the middle school students going into sixth grade. They're saying that they're not getting the information while the students are in fifth grade so that they know when they have to take the children for physicals and when they, you know, have to try out for the teams and things like that. And we also did discuss that, and there's going to be...
Yeah, so basically, what we do, the freshman coaches go down to the eighth grade to, you know, encourage kids to sign up when they go to high school. We do the same thing with the middle school and have the coaches go to the fifth grade to the elementary schools and make sure that everybody gets the information in the fifth.
Okay. One of the parents wanted to know why we got rid of the early morning classes and can they bring them back and then allow the students to leave early?
High school level or...
They used to have early morning at seven-twenty, and then a lot of it...
Early to nap.
So it was seven? And you'd have rose in the morning.
Seven in the morning, yeah, the one they taught at.
They did it, too.
And you got out at two, one forty-five or two fifteen or whatever it was.
Actually, one of the things that, that people are really pushing now is not, not even an early start up. It's actually a later start time for, for high school. And to do the reverse for elementary because...
It makes sense except that...
All the research shows that, but practically, it doesn't work with a lot of after-school activities, especially sports and things like that.
And all the kids...
There is something I do possibly want to look at, the option of adding a period zero at the high school, but not to get kids out early, but for some who are highly motivated students who want to take after class. But the idea of taking an early class to get out early really didn't work. And I speak as a former high school principal, today's would say the same.
It went away when I was principal of the high school, and the reason was the students weren't showing.
Well, then they also wouldn't want to go to sleep.
And it's distracting.
When they get out at two o'clock, everybody converges. It'll be, you can't hear. Well, if you're involved in any after-school activities and stuff like that, you get it early. You still got to hang out till one o'clock, which is a problem. But I don't mind the idea of adding, allowing early morning classes for those students who just need, need or want to take after class. But that's, you know, that's an issue that needs to be explored further.
That's contractual, right?
Contractually, a teacher's only required to teach a certain amount of classes. So, yeah, it would, it would mean the teacher needs to start early and get out early. The teacher might, but the students wouldn't.
Like they had before.
Correct.
Okay, then we had some parents with a concern about the student-teacher ratio for gym classes in the middle schools. They're saying there's probably about a hundred and seventeen kids or more in a class with only two teachers. So they're concerned that the classes are very large.
I, I, I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of that. What are we talking about?
Middle school, middle school.
No, wait, the middle school gym is definitely higher than it was last year, and it does have to do with our new reconfiguration of our, of our middle school schedule. But we have a solution that's not going to be in place for this year. We have a solution for next year, though. It's a matter of the extra rotation classes and electives that we want to add to the middle school schedule.
Is there anything that can't be done with getting an extra body in there at least? Does it, does it attendance, part of the, from what I'm understanding, and this comes from the students, I haven't seen this firsthand, so I don't know what the reality is, but what I'm hearing is that the classes are so large, it's taking so long to take attendance that they're, they're spending, I mean, they're telling me fifteen minutes. Maybe it is fifteen minutes, maybe it is ten minutes, but they're spending too long just sitting around doing nothing while they're taking attendance.
Yeah, actually, that, that actually, if that issue didn't actually come to, that's something I don't, I don't know if that is an issue.
And to mention, I think for the spring semester, I think we do have student teachers at the middle schools in the phys ed classes, so that would be an additional person also.
It does take at least six or seven minutes to take, minimum, to take attendance and get it all settled, that much of a day of experience.
Right, so maybe it is fifteen minutes of...
Well, I know fifteen, but if it takes...
When you have a hundred and seventeen minutes, it might be.
Okay, then we had some students ask about starting up a student EST at the middle schools, and I believe we're going to address that at the end. Okay, and then we had some positive things that were definitely set up the meeting.
Before you get into the positive, didn't we have the one at the school with the... Wasn't that that meeting?
School two.
Yeah.
Yes, hold on. I think that was after this.
Oh, okay.
That's all right. All right, you know what? I'll go down to that and go back up. They had, there were some parents that had a concern at school two. There was a sub in the classroom for a teacher that was out on sick leave, and they had some concerns and complaints about that. And I believe there was a meeting with the parents and with the new teacher because there was now a new...
Principal and a new teacher.
Teacher, and they're, a sub, but until the...
Well, not as, she's a long-term contract and leave replacement certified teacher, not, not a substitute.
Right, but she's not the...
And her four cards were addressed?
All addressed. Every issue was addressed and resolved to, I believe, the parent satisfaction.
Okay. I'll go back up. So one of the parents said he's very happy that we have a bargaining change program. He says that the special education department, although is lacking, and he would like to see the special education department have a little bit more concern, more consistency, more stability, things like that.
And I just, you know, and Mrs. Birch and I spoke about this, and I just have to defend my teachers, and I would say that we have some of the most caring individuals, especially in the special ed department. You don't, it's not a profession that you get into lightly, you know? It's something you get into because you love kids, you love kids who have special needs. So maybe a parent had a negative issue with one person or a couple of people, and maybe it's affected their... it's affected their perception of an entire department. But I don't think it's fair to characterize a whole department, you know, that way, especially not knowing the teachers that I know.
But I also believe that that parent, that's what I'm thinking of, I think their tune has changed all around. That they're, I think they have a more positive outlook now after the last...
I, I believe so, yes.
Yes.
And I think it'll be better.
Then the parents are concerned that if there is going to be a long-term sub going to a classroom, if there is any way that we can let them know somehow that this long-term sub is going to be coming instead of the sub just kind of showing up and the parents finding out from the students.
Yeah, in, in, in most cases, when we know in advance that a teacher's going out, you know, usually it's a maternity, we know that in advance. Or we think we know when they're going out, but then all of a sudden, things are unpredictable. So that maybe changes something. So, so, so the truth is, for the vast majority of times, parents aren't notified in a timely manner. But there's always going to be circumstances like that. Or if a teacher just gets sick suddenly and just doesn't come back to work where parents are notified, you know, after the fact. But, but we do try in all circumstances to notify parents as timely as possible. But I know that specific situation and I know, I know that's exactly what happened there.
Perfect storm, one, two, three, just everything.
Yeah.
Okay, they said the loudspeakers in McManus are a problem. The volume on some of the loudspeakers are not working and the students aren't able to hear or the faculty is not able to hear when announcements are being made. They also wanted to know if we could do email blasts for our board meetings. And we'll leave it on a good note, which one of the parents said he's very proud of Lyndon. There's more good things than bad. He wants, you know, he wants it to keep coming and he wants to let us know that we care because we're taking the time to address and listen to the concerns of the parents. So other than that, I think we're good. And our next meeting is going to be January 11th. For student. And that concludes my report for the parent. That's here.
Right here.
At 6:30.
6:30. Parent, parent EST, January 11th, 6:30 here at the board office.
Okay. Next, we have a report maybe for the high school EST.
Yes, we do. We met on the 15th of December, myself and Mr. Tuckleski. And we had one freshman, three sophomores, one junior, and two seniors, four ladies and, I'm sorry, four ladies and three gentlemen. That meeting consisted of Pomptonian coming in to speak with our students about their concerns of what was going on in the lunchroom. And it was a very, very good meeting for the students as well as for Pomptonian. The students had back and forth conversation with Pomptonian. There were things that they didn't know that they could do, and I'll get into that. For instance, they were complaining about the french fries being soggy and the french fries being cold. And there's, they told them that new fryers are going to be installed as well as two new convection ovens and that they were being installed the week of December 19th. So hopefully that would take care of the issues with the french fries. They were installed. So hopefully that issue is gone.
I forget what they call the thing that's the warmer, so that if you fry the fries...
The heated slide?
Yeah, so that they...
The heated slide was broken and that needed to be fixed.
That needed to be fixed.
Yes.
It was a great meeting.
Yeah. So they said that they had an issue with flies during the eighth period lunch that were around in the batch of cookies. So what happened was the lunch lady said whenever you see a problem like this, you need to get us immediately so that we can see. And, you know, because the student said, well, I just didn't buy the cookies and I just walked away. And they said, we can't solve these problems if we don't know about them. So you have to let us know when it's happening. And the students didn't know to go to them and tell them that. Or if they got a bag of apples that weren't fresh, or they got something that wasn't cooked properly, they can go right to one of the ladies in the red shirts and they would take care of that. For them, they would either replace the product or give them something different. And the students didn't know that they were allowed to do those things.
Who is responsible for the equipment? Is that ours, that we own, or is that Pomptonian's responsibility?
It's our equipment. We replace it when it breaks.
They have to clean it, though.
They have to clean it.
And then isn't there a thing like, our profits, if we, if there's profits made in the cafeteria, we have to put the money back into the cafeteria?
Yes, and that's what we use to buy any new...
That's what we usually use to buy the equipment.
Is Pomptonian timely when this known equipment is broken? Or is this...
I haven't heard of any issues.
Any problem, though?
I never do.
If there's a problem, they contact us because we tell them, we approve them to purchase because we can't use the money for anything else.
Okay.
So whenever they call, they have to get three quotes and then we approve the lowest and then our staff or the contractor, however, depending on what the equipment is, then installs it when it comes in.
Okay, they were complaining a little bit about the wraps, but they said the wraps have changed. In previous years, they were using chicken nuggets in the wraps. And now this year, they will be using chicken tenders and turkey in their wraps. Then the students were saying that the turkey sometimes has a bad taste to it, the lunch meat. And they said it depends on, sometimes they get it, you know, it depends on the brand that they get. So that might be the taste that they're tasting, that it might be because the wholesaler who sends it to them runs out of it and then they...
And they substitute.
I feel, I feel like every meeting we talk about Pomptonian, I know that we always do things to meet with them and stuff, but have we ever explored the option to look into a different food provider?
Every five years we go out for a proposal.
When's, when's it up?
A year, one more year.
So would now start the time of looking and touring other schools and their facilities and...
You could do that a bit more.
I was just wondering.
We've gone out and other companies don't want to come in.
No, companies don't want to come in. I, I...
Right, right, tell them.
I, I, since you approached the subject, I'll bring it up. The last national school boards committee, and I've got, and down New Jersey school boards, I've talked to people from this area and they do not want to, want to go up against Pomptonian in terms of bids. And one of the companies I was going to go to, which I always thought had a good reputation, which is Aramark, which is, you know, they do a lot of stuff. They are very costly, number one. And number two, one, a board member for a district, different district, who had them said, don't go there, they stink for evidently student lunches because they don't make enough money from student lunches. They do very well in corporate, but not for schools, even though they're in schools. So in essence, you know, since we're restricted by bidding, people don't even want to bid against Pomptonian.
Well, Pomptonian only does school lunch. They're not, these are the big Marriott's and the Aramarks that do all over the place. So, you know, this is small cases for the big companies. They don't really want to do lunch when it's $2 for lunch.
Marcus, the guy, I believe?
Mark from Pomptonian?
From Pomptonian, yeah. They've picked up a lot of Aramarks, people bamming down on them. And I, I think we're, right now, we're well certainly approached that we took with Tracy and Therese and stuff like that, that where we just question what they do and put them on their toes, so to speak, will serve us better than, than bringing somebody else in ahead of time. I mean, if somebody else bids, bids it and they win, then we bring them in.
You have another option. You can double the price of your lunches and get what Cranford and Westfield have.
No, I was just gonna say Cranford has Pomptonian and they don't have the...
Yeah, but it's $4.50 for a lunch.
Right.
That's the same word. That's where my...
We would have to not participate in a national school.
Right, that's the problem.
I try to save money.
It's not saving money.
What it is, with the board would have to pick up the cost of students who...
And that's where the difference is.
So the board would have to pick up the cost for students who receive free reduced lunch. That's...
Sixty-five percent. Yeah, sixty-five percent.
So what's the solution?
It is 65%?
We have to just...
We have to just... We're at 65%? These are all... They are? We're at 65%?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, then you need to make...
You should taste the mystery shop.
Because they'll pay for school trips. You can only stroll with students while they're...
I remember when I was in high school, when the... They said, it's anyway.
And parents always have the option to make their children...
What does, like, Roselle have?
They have nachos.
Who?
Nachos? I think it's...
Oh, that's the first, so in, in school boards, they gave us a little...
There's something a few companies really out there doing it, but you got like four companies to choose from.
We're a very big district too, and some of the companies, not, not the Marriott, but the smaller nachos, and there's a couple other that were too big for them.
And then there's others, they're regional ones too. When you go school boards, there's some that only work in South Jersey. They, you know, you talk to them, say, well, where are you? No, we don't call that one.
Okay, I think we can move on to our next area of concern.
Okay, and just, we basically only had enough time to talk about the lunches. So they did leave it on a positive note. They said they love the spicy chicken because whatever they did differently with the spicy chicken...
A lot of new stuff that they like.
The pizza crunchers, they said, were really good. They started doing pizza on Wednesdays and Fridays. And some, some of the students say it's too much, some of the students say they like having it. So they don't know what to do with that, so they're going to play around with it. But other than that, that kind of concludes my report for the student EST. We have not set a new date yet. We need to set a new date, so...
You find that we're testing it. Because we, we, I don't get enough, a lot of our kids, they have conflicts, you know? We have 20 kids on that...
Well, this year, you'll see on the assignment sheets, we're also going to institute it in the middle schools. So that's going to be another, you know, issue, you know, that we have to, you know, concern ourselves with. All right, Ms. Sunak, do you have anything about the special ed EST?
Yes, there is a meeting. They're going to have one of the three on January 19th, 6:30.
Is there a speaker at that one?
I, I wasn't given that information. I just got the dates.
6:30 you said?
That always is 6:30.
Okay.
No flyer has, we haven't received a flyer or anything.
And that'll be sunny side?
Usually it is. No.
No, they...
Oh, with the professional development, maybe?
Professional development.
Oh, yes.
Moved, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I said no. The flyers were being printed, they were printed yesterday.
Are they doing it, are they doing it at the Academy of Excellence or are they doing it at the professional development? They usually bring in a good speaker or somebody to...
It's actually very interesting.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go into, does anybody have any unfinished business that they want to bring up? All right, I'm going to pass out the committee assignments at this time. And just to explain what is going to have to work this year is we're going to still continue the committee of a whole concept, which will be on the Tuesday prior to the Wednesday board meeting. The board meetings will be on the fourth week of the month. And the different committees will be given their information by Dr. Robertosi on Thursday the week before. Now...
Mr. Public School, just to clarify, I'll be sent, I'll be doing management operations. Kathy will be doing her agenda, Denise will be doing her agenda.
Right. And what we did here, what, what happened was, since we have a committee of the whole, we just have one spokesperson. But the three people who are assigned each to the committees could contact Dr. Robertosi anytime, discuss it. The bottom line is what we want to know, if you find anything that you question, you can question Dr. Robertosi. If you're still not satisfied, bring it up to our committee of the whole meeting and we'll discuss it there as a group, okay? And the rest of the board will receive their packets on Friday. So we got all weekend and Monday to digest them. And hopefully by doing it that way, the committee people will have maybe finished their part. If they found any discrepancies, problems or whatever, they could be resolved and hopefully be resolved before the meeting, okay? Any questions? All right. At this time, we'll go to, any comments from board members?
I...
Okay, new business, yes?
I'll be busy. I'll be doing it.
We're going to get to that now. Okay, good. All right, new business.
I would like to extend some congratulations to the re-elected members of the board. Welcome, Mr. Martucci. And I apologize my point, Mr. Martucci.
Hands in what port, literally, you're from.
Thank you.
You're from the south, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's why I said it right.
There you go. And if you have any questions, everybody here has been very, very helpful tonight. I'm sure they'll extend the same for you. And...
And I'll echo your sentiments. Anybody who is new to the board, any of us will be more than happy to answer any questions anytime you have them. And over the two years that I've been a member, the board works very, very smoothly. We go over things carefully and we always come to an agreeable conclusion. We have our, our, is how we, shall we say, situations, but they always get resolved because we're working with the kids. And that, that's our main goal. So I'm looking forward to a good year and I hope you are as well. And at this time, I would open up the floor to anybody in the public who wishes to make any comments. Yeah.
No, I just want to say thank you for everyone for their tremendous support from the school initiative with the toy drive. And a special thanks to the high school students and the choir, their advisor, Mr. Cosby, who helped out with Carolyn, with Lyndon. And thanks to all the volunteers who helped wrap the, over the, over 700 gifts in less than 15 minutes. It was really well.
Well, thank you very much.
Very good. Made some people happy for Christmas, that's great.
Made our children happy.
That's a wonderful thing. Did well.
Wonderful, then.
Anybody else?
Good job.
Anybody from the public? Okay, seeing none, I will ask someone to be put for a chairman.
I make the motion to chairman.